Thirty-four. We are returning from executive session. I understand a motion or roll call, yes? Roll call on a motion to return from executive session. Is that correct what it says there, Larry?
Yes, I'm going.
All right. Gonzalez and Holston, thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston, President, Board.
Yes.
You're up.
Yes.
Raisik.
President.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Okay. I know we've got a... We've got a pile of papers and packets. I wanted to just briefly under my agenda talk about the fact that I don't have a personal agenda per se. I just wanted to explain and express what's happened on this. Larry has been interacting over the last few months, whatever it is, with other council pertaining to trying to embrace the expectations of the board as it has been stipulated pertaining to some of the ordinances that were introduced last June. The goal is not at this point to necessarily vote on any of those things, even though they're on the docket under the attorney's report. The goal is to simply make sure that they're readily available. I view part of my responsibility as the mayor is the chairman of the meeting, if you will, to facilitate making sure that these things are being brought forward, whether they are finalized or whether they're chewed on and digested and I don't get into the bodily functions and all that. But if they're able to be come back and if we can have further discussion or review or expectations or we can individually confirm with council or whatever like that, that's all fine. The goal is simply to make sure that it's being brought forward so people have an opportunity to review and instead of just ignoring the fact that they were presented before, that they do need to be brought forward just to have some further discussion. So pertaining to, I don't know if it was... Larry, if I can jump ahead to your section just a little bit. Items one, two, I think there are items K one, K two, K three, K four, and the group number K five. My goal is not necessarily to receive any votes on those tonight as much as it was to make sure that the board knows that council staff has been working on those things and they have redrafted in some cases or reaffirmed in other cases. There were a few things even as nominal as a couple of streets were missing from one of the lists. And so that's been reviewed and researched and just at this point, I frankly, even though I know there's, you know, a total, it looks like eight different ordinances that are being presented for your review. I know that's a lot. I recognize that. I don't really want to vote on those tonight. I want to make sure you have ample time to review them, ample time to call myself, meet with me or the administrator or even have interactions with the council regarding these things because I want to make sure that as legislators you are fully aware of and embracing what all these mean. This is not my thing. Whether they pass or fail, I've done my job of bringing them forward. That's my motivation. So just be aware of that. That being said, if I could just jump ahead onto Larry's just for a moment. I would like to entertain a motion to table items K one through five. C, D, whatever, yeah, all of those.
All I have to...
Again, just as a reminder, at the very most I would have thought, you know, to vote on the first four. But even at that, I think looking at it and everything else we have to deal with, I want you all to have more time. You know, first read, maybe a second read, whatever else where you've had ample time to review this.
May I just raise the thought here? Appreciate you saying interact with the administrators yourself, whatever.
Right.
I want to interact with the trustees on these things.
Sure.
Whether it's a special board meeting, I know you all are familiar with committee meetings, but I'd like to see us get together and if we have to take three of them or something and discuss them.
Sure.
Just those and then come up here for a sense of time. I'd hear other opinions, you know, for me to... I just like to hear other people. That's what we're having.
These are, as we indicated last year when we talked about some of them, these are some relevant changes that needed to be taking place. Larry observed as well that as a fine issue, Larry, we implemented the adjudication process.
Yes, sir.
And we had not necessarily taken the time to thoroughly look at all of our village code to see if they were consistent with that deployment. So a lot of this is just allowing that mechanism to work more effectively. So that's fine and I don't have any problem with that, trustee Pop. You know, we can call a special meeting. We have no problem with that whatsoever. I like to have an idea about how much time because I want you all to read through these yourselves individually first. Some of you are pretty good at just getting into the meat of them and that's great. Others, I don't mind if we do this like we've done the budget in the past where we just line by line almost just so we fully understand this. It doesn't matter. I would hope that if you can at least read them ahead of time, then you can simplify it to a series of questions. And if the questions at the very least can then be presented to the administrator or myself, at least then it makes it easier for us to hold the meeting because Larry, if he needs to do additional research or Ruben does or whatever else, that allows that research to be enabled based on questions that are supposed. So what I'd like to do at this point is if we can table these, I would like them to be perhaps before the next meeting, if questions could be written down and submitted, specifically questions that would help us know how to deal with concerns, that we would do so simply if you want to send them to the administrator, that's fine. If you want to ask me directly or send them to me, that's fine. And then it gives us a better idea how to prepare for an actual committee meeting, if you will. So that would be useful. So I'm looking for a motion to table those at the very least.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Sorry.
Trustee Raisik.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
I thought trustee Pop made a very good point. Procedurally speaking, in most villages, there's a process called committee of the whole. And we've mentioned this several times. I don't mind sending notes to you or administrator Batista. In fact, I did call administrator Batista this afternoon. We discussed a number of these in detail. But I think really it's time we start talking about maybe once a month having a meeting of the committee on the whole if we're not going to have individual committees. It possibly could be held before, let's say, the first board meeting of each month for an hour so that we can go through and discuss these as trustee Pop suggested in a group and have interaction with the village administration as well as with anybody that might be in the meeting. So I would recommend we consider doing that. We can have a standing meeting. Again, sometimes it is easier to have standing meetings on the first council meeting of each month, which is, I believe, the second two Wednesdays.
Typically the second ones.
But we could just say that as a standing, we would have a committee on the whole if it's necessary. But generally speaking, forty-eight hours before you're going to have any kind of discussion on something when you have this meeting is asking a lot of any trustee.
One hundred percent.
Working on the...
And again, as the administrator and the attorney knows from our discussions, the goal is not to take a vote, is merely to make sure that they're presented so everybody had an opportunity to review them, but with not an expectation for a vote today. I just want to make sure that was clarified.
Well, I believe the appropriate way to do this is a committee of the whole.
Sure.
Well, it does say on all of them, discussion and approval. So we maybe should have put it on approval in this discussion.
If somebody for some reason wanted to take one and would say, let's just run the others one now, they could have. You know, that's part of the reason for putting it in there. Being sensitive to the concerns of timeliness and everything else, we're going to do a better job of getting things to the clerk sooner, which means getting them to you sooner, which means they've given you typically, you know, hopefully over the weekend besides forty-eight minutes, you know, that's the goal. That's always been the goal. Sometimes it doesn't happen. Keep in mind the last few months, we've had, you know, just a couple of meetings and there hasn't been a lot of content. So we can call a committee meeting anytime you guys want to. I've never opposed it. So at this point, I don't know if it's prudent to call a committee meeting until you've actually had time to read all of these. I think it makes more sense to just table them until such time as we've got the consensus that we're ready to have for the discussion after having the time to read them individually. Because, I mean, we can go through in a committee meeting, but if we haven't been around the point of view of these individually, it's going to be a limited productivity again.
I've suggested probably the other things that will come up on meetings of committee on the whole besides just these type of things.
Trustee Holston, frankly, I know administrator Batista and I have been talking about this, but there's a part of me that wonders if, you know, we typically, a couple of times a year, sometimes three times a year, whatever the case may be, we only have one meeting a month because of the holidays or whatever kind of situation that arrives. It's not surprising that years ago, they used to have one village board meeting a month. And I'm not saying revert back to that. But if you had one village board meeting a month and you had another was more of the workshop or the committee, you know, where that's where you get into the meat of things and then you're really not really intent other than passing consent agenda type items, you know, which you fill up the meetings because trustee Gray, I don't know, are you able to make it here any earlier than...
You and I were talking, Mr. Batista today, talking about, you know, sixish, maybe five-thirty pushing it.
So and I wouldn't want to deliberately have a meeting where we can't have all participants that want to be there be there. So I don't have any problem. I know in the past, you know, you know, sadly, sometimes you get critiqued for having ten-minute board meetings, you know. I think we've gone a long way from that. Yet at the same time, feeling like we're actually all at the same table. You know, a lot of that has to do with our layout of the room, I suppose, and we talked about that at one point or another. But we do need to work on that. We do need to have more personal interaction and we need to actually make sure that we, you know, that for me, I feel like I need to do a better job of making sure I understand each person's concern so that, you know, council or the administrator, you know, is more effectively dealing with that as well as the rest of staff.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So the next regular, regularly scheduled board meeting is February tenth. So if we put a... By the way, I'm in favor of committee of the whole. I have an idea. I'd like, I'd love to catch these things out and hear everyone's opinion on this as a board. So should we have a committee of the whole on Wednesday, February tenth at five-thirty?
Well, we have a motion to table, a motion and a second to table. So I think we should finish this discussion and then set that later on.
And that was just discussion. I'll bring it up under new business. Okay. Corey, you can. Trustee, one.
Just to follow up on that discussion though, what is the engineer going to do the presentation on? And that'll be... So we won't be able to get that off your desk.
Okay.
So, all right, so I've got a motion from trustee Gonzalez and a second from Raisik to separate table. No date specific, they're just being tabled. Roll call, please.
Trustee, Board.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Going back to H one under the mayor's report. And again, I don't know if this is going to warrant further interaction that may or may not be as public at times because of the legal climate pertaining to that. But this is pertaining to the, what appears to be a deliberate unwillingness to adhere to our village ordinances and agreements by Gulf Vista. And I say appears to me. That's my disclaimer.
Management of the council.
Correct, correct. And there are some terms and conditions that are part of the agreement by which allowed Gulf Vista as a subdivision, if you will, to be implemented and which had to do with age issues and had to do with, you know, some discussion at times regarding the allowance for rental of homes within the area as well, which was, and there's a number of those things. And attorney Kraszewski has been in the process of trying to figure out the best way to address this because it is much more than simply an issue of code enforcement or whatever else. It's a very delicate situation partly because in the event, and some of you may have read the ordinances yourself, but for those that have not, in the event that they are found to be in violation and it is not redeemable, Larry, is I guess the best way to describe it, then it reverts to the most restrictive form of residential zoning, which would be R three, which would be the same as estate, which is like what we have on the other side of fifty-seven on the estate house, which basically makes it impossible for it to continue as is if they refuse to cooperate with the agreements that were set in place at the time and nothing has been done to change those agreements. So we are very, I say we, I think, I hope you guys kind of, I'm guessing you all feel the same way, but we're very sympathetic and sensitive to the fact that we've got a lot of folks that live there that are relying upon us to help them ensure that the management there is doing their part so that what they believe was going to be the environment they were going to live in is the same environment that our predecessors agreed to, to let them live in, in an environment that was not going to be inconsistent with that for life or death or anything. All that being said, we're just kind of wary with, it's not an easy thing to deal with.
Exactly what the mayor indicated, as he's indicating. I think this took place back in nineteen ninety-one. And at that point in time, it wasn't Gulf Vista, I think it was Mr. Ferrari. And it was a planned unit subdivision. They went through the whole process of the hearing. And we have to, meaning this village board has to live by the terms of that agreement. We can't rectify it now. We need to modify it with a judicial agreement. And whether it be this board or previous board or mayor O'Donnell, I know what attempts were done to try to bring Gulf Vista to the table. Like the mayor indicated, I think you walk a real fine line in this situation. We understand the concerns of the residents, but that agreement's the prevailing agreement and that's part of the issue. And that agreement's never modified. In fact, we tried to modify it, I think about ten years ago, about another payment to the village on an issue and that didn't take place. So we do have some recourse, but I think it's limited.
So the point in having this here on the agenda was, it's been brought to our administration's attention that there are a number of residents within the community, within the Gulf Vista community that are frustrated. And more often than not, whether it be somebody violating something in whatever subdivision neighborhood or whatever else that may be taking place, more often than not, we find out about it, not necessarily because we're out sticking our nose into everything, but because somebody's complaining. And when you receive enough complaints, we have little choice but to address them. And we have to address it in a way that is going to be as gracious as possible, but yet redeeming the original expectations. The goal is to get them to comply with the agreement that was in place and has not changed. If they refuse to comply with that, then we may have no choice but to take legal action against them.
May I, as the mayor indicated too, we do have certain, there are, we know of certain violations that are occurring. We just want to be measured in how we approach it because once you approach Gulf Vista, it's going to be, we got to be ready to take the next step. And that could be a long battle. So we understand the concerns of the residents, but it's a balancing act. And my, I guess, a memo form to the board for the review and the whole history. We understand the concerns, but it will be a balancing act. But once you push that envelope and we're in court, that could take a while.
If there's any concerns or questions or y'all, I'm not looking for a vote, but just a status update for the trustees as well as the public to know that we haven't forgotten and yet at the same time we do need to do something. And we're aware of it. And so, any comments?
I do have a comment. I know I live there, but I have a comment that I'd like to say. I don't know who our regional person is, if it's the same one we had before. May I poll Mr. Snow? Do we still, who's our regional director, sir?
Kevin Marcus. He's not those Judy signer that came in here. She's long gone.
I was, okay. So my suggestion might be that we meet.
Yes, sir.
Then Larry and maybe Ruben and the mayor and in the, what would we call, executive session, discuss the problems and see what the response might be. I mean, you've got to start somewhere if you're going to approach it. And that would be, to me, the easiest one. You're not really attacking. You want to find out how they feel about our concerns.
I believe that if anybody from the public, if anybody from the public has input specifically to known violations, that they can help us itemize those so that when we do have that discussion in a similar area, it'll be to trustee Pop's recommendation, I appreciate the wisdom there, that we would not just have it face to face because those have gone mute in the past, that we actually have certain identifications of things that are known violations and hand-delivered so we can express our expectations, not just to confront with penalties and fines and whatever else, but to simply remind them that our goal is to work with them. But at the same time, if we don't itemize them and hold them accountable, we're going to get the same thing we've gotten for the last ten years.
Well, I am sure between myself and Mr. Snow, who's the president there, Sid's one of the execs that deals with management, we can get some information.
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Raisik.
That a fair statement, Sid?
Pardon me?
I'll allow you to get absolutely.
Sure.
So Dr. Raisik, two-five-six-five, four Firestone, resident of Gulf Vista. There is a committee of five persons who meet regularly with ELS every month. The last meeting was suggested by, by back of Minnaburk, now on our, what, a ninth manager?
Ninth in fourteen years.
Of Gulf Vista Estates. The last manager, if I can say it courteously, was very unactive. It was suggested that there be a better rapport between Gulf Vista management and executives of ELS and Moni to get some kind of rapport together to understand and hear out each other's feelings. If a potential buyer goes to Gulf Vista, there is nothing at all in the office concerning the village of Moni. I think probably there's limited amount of information here that pertains to Gulf Vista and somebody would come to Moni asking about Gulf Vista. What information does the administration have to relay concerning Gulf Vista? We had the opportunity to meet with the regional manager and his boss last week. Both listened and heard what we had to say, request better rapport with Gulf Vista and Moni. We hope that does occur. It's going to take some reach out on someone's part to say, let's get together and talk about the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, for anybody from the public or trustee that lives there, any information you can help us with itemizing known violations of, or perceived violations even, then attorney Kraszewski will probably be drafting a very specific letter and I would suggest that, I would like to, then, if at the very least Ruben and Larry, if you could follow through with that, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I just say one last thing too about the violations then? Didn't we, we want to approach them and figure out what the difference is before we give them a list of...
Well, the violations specifically, the violations specifically have to do with what they've verbally been told multiple times and that is about the age issues. That's one of the most obvious ones. There's, last I, last I got a kind of a summary list, there were somewhere between fifteen and twenty known violations of underage and there's actually human children living in there.
Yeah, we know there's buses over there every day.
And so...
Although, may I say something about the buses? They're not there. I don't think that they're, the children that may be there, they are not allowed to park there in Gulf Vista. So they park out.
By the church.
You'll see one by your entrance or exit of Country Meadows. So the community management has said, you cannot park your buses in here, okay? So there are people that are paid bus drivers for schools.
Oh, that's okay.
Used to see them pull in there. They shouldn't be anymore.
I know. I had a similar question. I saw one parked at the New Hope Church. And I was like, did I just see you guys come out of Gulf Vista? And I go, yeah, that's where I live. It's like, oh, yeah. Head ask.
The other thing is the validity of rental.
Right.
In conjunction with the ordinances, which is a touchy one.
Right.
And I'm saying it publicly.
Sure. Well, that's...
I haven't done that before, but I have.
Those are the two most obvious. And the fact that they've been addressed multiple times. I know Ruben, myself, Chief Subcar, and with the last manager, we'd all sat down and had discussions. And I think it was the manager before that that seems to have deliberately ignored the age issue entirely. So, but there again, those are representatives of the management team and the management team allows it by inaction to address it. And it's an unfortunate situation, but we have to deal with it. So just giving the board and the public a status update on that so you're all aware of that. But any input or whatever on that would be appreciated if you could direct that to administrator Batista. I guess it'd be the best avenue on that. So, thank you. Another update, not, no progress on this particularly at this point. I mentioned it before, administrator Batista married Jo from Parks and Rec, myself. One partner, I think DJ's been involved as well, trying to formulate an intergovernmental agreement, the concept at least, you know, still kind of in the talking stages, an intergovernmental agreement with the school district for more reciprocal use of their facilities across the street, especially when they're not using it and it best serves the community to have some facility usage and some things of that sort. It seems to be well received, but I'm not sure what it takes to get things done in the school district. So we're working on that. I talked to one of the school board members the other day and I may just end up having the opportunity to talk to the two school board members that represent the Moni area specifically and ask for a little assistance. So additionally, commend the chief in the police department for very effectively addressing the safety of our children over by the school there. I noticed this morning that one of our officers was, had even pulled over one of the school buses itself. So frankly, I have to commend him for it because, you know, if anybody ought to be careful, it's people that are... ought to be careful, it's people that are hauling our precious cargo. Anyhow, just wanna hats off to the chief on that, and helping us make the progress we need on that. Subsequent to that, I also had discussions with the mayor from University Park, and her police chief pertaining to trying to implement a more effective, perhaps a formalized intergovernmental agreement as it comes to enforcement on Will Center Road, and the posting of signs letting people know they're up near Grouling and Will Center, don't head south if you're driving a truck, because there's not a truck route ahead, but it doesn't say that up there. So, it's difficult for people from, you know, where Blue Links, they call it Georgia Pacific, but yeah, Blue Links in that area up there, if they're up there, they don't recognize that there's a signal zone ahead or things of that sort. So, we're hoping that through an intergovernmental agreement with University Park, that we can have a collaborative enforcement of this, of the area, especially right by the school, but giving people a heads up in advance, just to discourage it. I don't know that I've mentioned it in the past, but, you know, we've talked about weight limits and truck routes, or not truck routes and things like that, and sometime last fall, I guess it was, Super Tenner Cruzel, in my opinion, one of all in beyond, to make sure people clearly knew where not to drive a truck, yeah, where to drive a truck, because even at the corner of Will Center and Creighton, Eight Court Street, it's, the only thing we can do to make it any easier for them is have somebody stand there going, hey, go that way, you know? But he's done an effective job of putting signs out, not just telling people where not to go, but where to go. And I think that helps, but there again, we're doing everything we can to put the information out there so people know what not to do, and where to do, where it's appropriate to do things. And talking to the chief from University Park, they too have been frustrated with their own ordinances of the past. Previously, their fines were similar to ours, fifty bucks for a simple violation, and they are actually, I don't know if they passed them last night or not, I think their board meeting was on Tuesday night, but I know they were presenting it, and they were talking about a flat fine of, I think, fifteen hundred dollars for overweight violations, just for violating the regulatory posted signage. That's not my goal, you know? But just so you understand, that's what other communities have realized the need to do. And again, in talking to them, they feel similar to what I believe people of our community feel, and that is, it's not so much about the trucks and the truck areas as an example, it's more of where they're violating the residential play areas and things of that sort, so. Just giving an update on that. So, Mr. Batista?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could at this time, ask Mr. Roger Green to come forward. Mr. Green is going to update the board and deliver this in on the Meals on Wheels program. I know there's been a lot of questions, as well as the senior center, and since it's closed, a lot of programs that have kind of fallen by the wayside, and I know you're gonna talk about that as well.
Yes, sir. Again, Roger Green, from Kenkeke County Community Services Incorporated for Will County. I'm the community outreach specialist. Like the administrator was saying, our company took over the Meals on Wheels and senior nutrition programs from the senior service center for Will County. I have a couple flyers here, you know, for the board members, and I'll just get them on, sure, we'll get those out, I'll leave them somewhere, we can.
Good job, sir. Come on, man.
Yeah, right now, we serve about five hundred meals here in Will County, and about, just right here in the little, in Moni, in the little area of the village, we have about, we do like about nine meals daily, which is what we got. However, we also have a waiting list here in Moni, in Montecamp.
Okay.
So, and a lot of our services are, we get our money from federal government and state funding, and we also get, you know, as the townships participate, we get money from the townships. We have a number of townships in the county who participate where they won't have, where they don't have a waitlist at all. And it just, it depends on how, however you guys wanna participate with that. We are not gonna cut our services at this time. Right now, we are at a point where we're pretty solid up until the end of March. At that point, we'll make adjustments the way we need to. I have to have a discussion with my director. The only, what we're gonna do, instead of doing, we're gonna cut our meals back a little. Okay, we're gonna cut our shows back a little. However, at this point, we're doing five meals a day, we're doing five hot meals, five hot meals, I'm sorry, five hot, five hot meals per week, one per day at lunchtime. The fact that we're looking at right now is we'll, instead of delivering five times a week, we'll deliver four times a week. The way that's gonna work is we'll deliver Monday, Tuesday. On Tuesday, we'll deliver a hot meal and a frozen meal, which will supplement that Wednesday meal, and then Thursday and Friday, again, so we'll still do the five meals. And those meals come around lunchtime, eleven, between eleven and twelve thirtyish.
Roger, what is the, who's the primary type of recipient for this?
For the hot meal delivery, sir, we, it's, we serve sixty and over, thirty or sixty and over.
And qualified by income, yes?
No, 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 it's not. It's qualified by need.
Just from money?
It's a need.
Okay.
And what they do is, we have what's called a, it's case coordination unit, and what they'll do is, a person applies for the, for the program, the case coordination unit will interview them, they come out through the house, they'll interview the person that received the meals, and they, they put them into, on a list based on their need, not on their, on their income. And just real quickly on the need, they, they put them into three categories. They go into a low, high, and immediate. If they're going to the low, low and high, they go onto a, if they go into the immediate need, we actually have a little bit of wiggling with our budgets, so we're able to put that person on the program immediately. A lot of these people get absolutely no contact during the week. The only contact they'll get would be, would be the Meals on Wheels, so look at that, at least they have human contact at least once, you know, once, once a day, five times a week. If we go through the house and knock on the door and no one answers the door, we have a person back there who will contact their emergency contact as a welfare check. If you're on a welfare check, we're still not able to contact that person or verify that person feel okay, we actually, we actually call local law enforcement to go out and do a welfare check, yeah. The other thing that we do here is, we do the senior congregant meals programs. We try to get the people who are normally have a place to go, and the unfortunate reality of getting older is, you know, they become, they become victims. You know, a lot of the older folks, you know, my mom, my mom in particular, you know, they get, they're more afraid to step out again, especially when they're going someplace where they're gonna get a big mix of young and older, whatever, where the young folks will start taking advantage of some of the old folks in the area. It gives them a safe place to go. It gives them a place to go where they can talk to folks who have something they don't wanna talk about. You know, seventeen year old has nothing that I don't wanna talk about. And, you know, you get people down there who wanna talk about, you know, the, the old days, and you get a safe place to go, and you get the nutritious meal. One of the big questions I always get is, what are the Mahaloavans? And I explain that is, if you eat at a five-star restaurant in Chicago every day, it'll look to be desirable. However, if you're eating, you know, if you live at a Foxhole, it's not bad. So, I've eaten each and every one of the meals that they serve, on every, on the menu, and it's not a bad meal. It's not the absolute greatest meal, but it's not bad, and the nutritional value is not determined by us. Our governing body would be the Northern Indian North Agency on AG, and what they do is they set down standards on nutrition for older Americans. And everything on those meals, everything in those meals has to meet, fit within those guidelines. Again, we contract that stuff out to a caterer, again, who has to create a menu that fits within those guidelines, and get the meals sealed at a certain temperature to make sure that there's no health issues or no, you know, poison issues, and deliver those things out to these people's seniors. Another program we do is, is a frozen meal, because some of the more rural areas is simply not cost-effective for them to go there five times a week. So, what we'll do for those folks is, we'll pick a box of five meals and deliver those, so they won't have to decide whether lights or something to eat. And I know I'm kinda jumping around, but I, I looked at, I was reading your agenda, it says I've only been about three minutes. Trying to, trying to get.
You invited me, so that's fun. As you can tell, you have some leeway.
Yes, I was kinda jumping around.
Roger, you still working out of the church over here?
Yes, sir. We deliver the hot meals out here in Eastern Will County, they deliver the meals there, we have volunteers pick up the meals there, and deliver them out to Eastern Will County.
And how much would it cost after March to make sure we get five days a week set up for?
Okay, what the, it's seven dollars a meal per person, seven dollars per meal per person.
We have nine in Moni?
Yes, sir.
Actually, in Village Moni?
Yes, sir. My initial numbers, they came out, and it was, they put it out by, by zip codes, and when I went down and looked at the actual list of delivery in Moni, just look, the little township regulars are here.
Well, because we often get confused with the, on a corporate area that has our, our name, but it's not actually our building.
Yes, sir, I, yes, sir.
You know.
This one, this is, I.
Because Moni doesn't actually go to Green Garden, it doesn't actually go into.
Moni doesn't, the people out of here go to University Park?
I know, what I'm saying though is, is there's a lot of people with a Moni address that are in Washington township, or, I'm sorry, Will townships, or Green Garden township, whatever else.
Yes, sir. For the, just throwing it out there, for the Moni township, they have about fifty-nine.
Okay.
And that would include University Park, Stager, and there's a couple of other ones out there.
So, there's fifty-nine meals coming out of here?
Yes, sir. We deliver about fifty-nine meals out of there that go out into the Eastern Will County area. And that would include those frozen meals, also a box of frozen meals that I was talking about. One of the other things that we're trying to get back up and running, from my understanding, and once upon a time it was here, was a congregant feeding program for this area. Just in my travels, I've been working down in University Park, and I've also been out to Peatown, different areas out there, and the dynamic of the folks is night and day.
Sure.
You know, the folks at University Park probably don't have a lot to talk to about, a lot to discuss about. When I was out there in Peatown the other day, and they were talking about tractors and combines, pickup trucks and combines, never had that conversation in University Park. So, what, what I was, I was just throw out there to you is that, well, I guess from my understanding, there was once a congregant feeding program in Moni, which is kind of halfway between. So, you can get folks from all over who has something.
How many people would you estimate would be a part of a congregant meal program in Moni?
Well, as a matter of fact, I talked with the manager down here in University, probably I don't, I can't speak on Moni because I don't know. I can speak on, I started, I helped start at the one in University Park initially, we had twelve.
We, I know about that program. We had one here in Moni, but we had to drop it because we didn't have very many people coming, so it was dropped, it was having, now that the church appeared. I was involved in this program, with a person from the senior center.
Right.
And just within the last year, fell apart.
Yeah.
Let's go down, please. When I, we were having a discussion before I came on with my director, there was three separate programs out here, actually, which is probably why they didn't have the numbers to support it, instead of having them come to one place, they were splitting it into three different parts. So, and one of the places was, that we're at, Saint Paul, Saint Paul?
Saint Paul is correct. We, I do Meals on Wheels out of Saint Paul's.
I know the program.
Okay, you may have seen me out there.
We picked up a few other programs, we, I think we still have the exercise program, a couple other things.
One of the things that is, I don't know how, how big the senior programs are out here, but one of the things we also do is, we, we support, like, we have a special program going on out here, one of the things we can do, we can also bring in a meal to help support those things, too. So, not on, not on an everyday basis, but occasionally, like, say, if they were gonna do something special out of the church, since it's already established, we can do a special meal, they'll support, say you were bringing in, I don't know, the eternity to talk about the budget issues concerning seniors.
Sure.
We can help support that with a, with a meal at that time, just to help them out. So, that's, that's also one of the things we do.
And reason for the four-day schedule at the end of March is because of funding?
Yes, sir.
This is, if I remember right, the last couple of years, the state has been liquid on their funding payments, and it's usually April or May before they start to make payments.
I can't really speak on this, sir. I just, a discussion I was having with my, my, my director, was that, how we're gonna try to address that, if, if the budget issues didn't continue, and they continue as we are right now.
Thank you very much. Any more questions for?
I just wanted to reiterate something Mr. Holston said, too, he asked how much it would be in order to keep us reducing the meals from five to four days, and it would be, there's fifty-nine meals coming out of.
That would be for the entirety of the Eastern Will County area.
Eastern Will County?
Out of, out of Saint Paul, so it's all out of Saint Paul?
Yes, sir.
That's four hundred and thirteen dollars a meal.
And that would be for the, and, and again, I want to throw this out here, too, because we're like, like any other company, if you simply send a big chunk of change, a bunch of money to them, they're gonna throw that into the general, yeah, to the kitty. What I, what I was told, and what I was told, what I'm telling everyone else, is that if you want things to go to your township, because we all know our resources are valuable to us, and we wanna take care of our own first, I understand that, so which when you do, if, whether if you do decide you wanna participate like that, you would, you know, mention that you want this to go to the Moni township, or Moni, I'm sorry, village of Moni.
Sure.
Because that way, that money would go to your citizen, and it wouldn't get thrown into a general fund.
And you said you have about seven people that are on the list that are not receiving currently within our village?
Negative, sir. Right now, the waitlist right now for Moni is ten.
Ten.
Yes, sir. This is the latest, it, it goes up and down, but this is the latest list I have right here for Moni.
Is that waitlist because of financial reasons?
Yes, sir. And like I said, there are a number of communities in the county who don't wanna have a waitlist, so they participate in matters of, they don't have a waitlist.
Sure. So, that's seven dollars a day, times five days a week, three hundred and fifty dollars a week?
You just answered a question I had in my mind, because we used to deliver up to twenty meals. We now deliver about twelve or thirteen.
Because of funding?
It is because of funding, and another, another issue that we're having is, people simply didn't know the program still existed.
Sure.
You know, when the senior service center ran into their issues before I came, but what I'm getting is that they figured, they thought, when, they went away from the senior service center is simply one way, and that, and that's not, that's not what happened.
Sure.
They just got taken over by another, another agency.
It'd probably be good, at the very least, because of our publication, for us to have, I know we're short on our time, but for us, publication with Mary Jo and.
The March, Marched up.
She's already got something, appreciate you going to.
We're going to.
Good. Good. And then, you know, mention the fact that, yes, I'm sure you're looking for corporate sponsors to.
Yes, sir. We are looking for, and we're not the profit, so we're, we are looking for sponsorship to provide the best service we can out here.
Great, thank you very much.
May I just really throw something else in there, if I may? They used to offer reimbursement per mile for the deliveries. I don't mean to go, we never took it, we never signed the papers for it, you know?
Yes, sir.
But now, it's not offered. So, the drive, people that are driving and delivering, they're burning their own gas up there. I just want people to understand how bad it is financially.
Well, I actually have, if you would like, I could get back to you on it, because we talked about that, and at least, that, I can't say for absolute, because that's kind of outside of what I do normally, but I could find out how.
That's okay. Everybody here is fine with it not being reimbursed, so that's a problem.
Should we deliver them yet?
Well, I can find out if that's something that still a bit with folks who still want it back. And I think we need to volunteer, but we're being reimbursed, I believe.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. If I could mention, this would be a good time to mention this, we just received a call the last few days from the Will County Health Department, and it'll be offering, they're gonna be offering dentistry work once a month for those residents that are not covered by dental care or Medicare, if they're without a health coverage, dental coverage. They're still working out the details, we should be adding information, I hope within the next week or so, when we'll be able to do that, but it'll be kind of done out of an RV, out of a mobile unit, and we'll do that once a month. And so, we've given that information also out to the Moni Alliance of Churches, to make them aware of that, in the event that there's some things they wanna dovetail and assist and join in with some of these services. Also, just to remind you, February the tenth, we have an open house, and it'll be at five thirty, before the village board, and it'll be Robinson Engineering doing the open house, covering the realignment project, the status will read on that. We're also coordinating a meeting with the truck stop, and both the TA and pilots to discuss that as well. So, February the tenth, at five thirty. Finally, I've talked to the board over the last few days in reference to Eagle Fair, and everyone is well aware of the issues that have been out there. And, uh, everyone is well aware of the issues that have been out there. Over the last, uh, six months or so, there's been a lot of work that's been done. The village has got the bond, we've, uh, put curbs, cut our sidewalks, and finished the road around there. And now, some of the issues that we'll, we, we need to look at, uh, is what are we going to do now that all this is done, we've got vacant lots out there? So, um, we've got a few options, uh, that have just come to light, and, um, the thought is to offer, uh, or put the opportunity out there to have a committee of the whole, or, or a special meeting to discuss, uh, what those options are, there's a developer, a builder, uh, and actually a bank as well, that, uh, have come forward to discuss with the board, uh, some of these options. So, um, the proposal, or proposed date would be next week, Wednesday, February the third. It's either five thirty or six PM, whatever, uh, works, but I guess we wouldn't need, uh, an option. So.
Mary, what's the earliest you could be here?
As I was, as I was discussing earlier, six o'clock. Five thirty I could push. And, and the only reason I mentioned it to them again, I'm not trying to say, you know, it's a subject that we've had for a few years. You know, discuss it so that we're not here, you know, until ten, eleven. Because we know how shames can get, and hopefully, no fun shames, but, uh, you know, it, it is something that, you know, we need to look at again, as you say, the committee of the whole.
Kirk, maybe give us a warm little idea?
It, it makes no difference to me, frankly, other than the fact that if you should ever want to make a decision, and that's the only thing that really makes it sets it apart, it is semantics, but it is, uh, you can have the same tone and same-
That just suggests to us there's something we don't know, if we're pushing so hard that we want to go to make a decision next week.
I don't have any decisions in mind.
Now, let's have a committee on the whole, we've already expressed that's what we'd like to do.
I'm still waiting for somebody to make a motion.
I make that motion. So we'll do the whole next week at six o'clock.
Right. Holston and Horn. That's always looking for somebody to make a motion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bob?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so your turn. Officials report with public words?
I have nothing to add.
Carson Wright, trustee Gonzalez?
Uh, just one short thing, and it was, it did appear on the Facebook page today and our social media, uh, that we are going to have the first ever, um, spring community-wide garage sale on Friday and Saturday, May thirteenth and fourteenth. Applications are available at village hall, a permit is only five dollars, um, yeah, five dollars for the permit and to be listed on the map, and you can see Mary Jo here at village hall during regular office hours. Ed, report.
Finance with trustee Warren, please.
Yeah, we have a few things. Um, we have, um, we have a company, we deal with, they're CP agents and consultants called Whipflee, right? Did I pronounce that right? Uh, we've used them for a few years, they'd like to renew our, their contract with the village. Um, they'll perform an audit, uh, audit services for the village. They do annual financial report filings, they do bond, uh, bond compliance reporting, TIF report filings. Uh, of course, our staff will look for other firms and for price point comparisons. So it's not, definitely a done deal, we'll make sure we get the, uh, recommended, the best price. Uh, of course, that's something we would vote on, of course, but we will get some different price points from, uh, different, uh, companies. Finance department has put together following policies that we're looking at. Uh, minimum fund balance, a debt policy, an investment policy, we're not ready to release those to the public, they're still in, uh, we're putting those together. Uh, but you should see those in the next month or so. General funds revenues for the month ending December thirty-one are currently sixty-eight percent of budgeted revenue. Property taxes, uh, are received in the first six months of our fiscal year, which may inflate revenue. The village will receive other revenue sources that are monthly, more regular going forward, such as sales tax and hotel tax. Are those quarterly or monthly? They're all monthly. Monthly, okay. Uh, village has collected at least ninety percent of its property taxes since two thousand nine, expect this trend to continue. Property tax levy amounts are set by each taxing district and sent to the Will County Clerk's Office for filing. These taxing bodies are, you will see these in your, um, on your, uh, tax bill. Uh, and we're not the only taxing body, as you know. Want to make sure the people, the people at home can hear this. Uh, the, the different tax, taxing bodies for this, for our village are the Forest Preserve, Will County Building Commission, Moni Township Town Funds, Moni Township Road Funds, Moni Fire District, School District two thousand, two oh one U, that is the largest part, that's approximately seventy percent of your tax bill. Community College District five one five, that would be Prairie State, Village of Moni, and then Village of Moni Road and Bridge. So those are all the taxing bodies you will see on your tax bill. Uh, we did, did we say library on there?
Library should be on there, Peatown Library is here.
Peatown, that should be on there too. Okay, thank you. General fund expenses currently sixty-four percent of budgeted expenses. And then if the village's general fund expenditure trend continues, finance department projects that the general fund will fall, uh, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars under anticipated expenses. So we're in a very good financial, uh, spot.
Comparison to the, trustee Warren, comparison of that to anticipated revenue for the same?
Yes. Uh, anticipated expenses, a hundred and seventy under anticipated expenses. And as usual, if you have any questions, you can certainly see me after the board meeting, or talk to our Director of Finance, Ed, report.
Business development, trustee Holston, please.
A couple of things that Kevin, a couple of things that Kevin made me before the meeting, the Will County, Will Cook Enterprise Zone is still being worked on, the program will be active very soon. Training sessions for staff, uh, will be in the next few weeks. There is a document from the Illinois Department of Revenue which is available, explaining how to get a sales tax exemption certificate for building materials. The Governor Rauner today announced a private nonprofit economic development corporation, ILB EDC. Uh, the significant thing about this is it's a nonprofit economic development organization that is not funded with any state money, all private money. The basic elements that I looked, uh, through the article and took out of it, they have a webpage, by the way. Uh, it's modeled upon the best practices of other state and local economic development organizations focusing on sales, marketing, and exceptional customer service. The formation of this, uh, throughout the fiscal year two thousand sixteen will be funded entirely with private donations. Uh, Department of Commerce will maintain all existing duties, including working with expansion and relocation efforts until the Illinois BEDC is operational, so it sounds like the department is going through some reorganization. Ed, report. Oh, I'm sorry, the W, the page for that, in case anybody is interested, is www dot ILB EDC dot org. Thank you, Kevin, for that information.
Building Services, trustee Bob?
I, I feel like I'm letting into, uh, Mr. Trustee Holston's area here. You know how we kind of have this gray area?
I'm glad you're such good friends, so it doesn't-
I'll be very, well, we were friends, no, yeah. I just want to say that, uh, I don't know if, uh, I believe it's our advertising that has something to do with it, things like that, but, uh, I'm a little bit, uh, let's say excited, almost excited about some possible business opportunities coming into the community, so, doesn't mean they're coming. It means that, uh, things look pretty warm, or some development that might come in the future. Ed, report.
Police Safety, trustee Rizet?
Yeah, um, got a couple of things here. From email, the village officials and staff have completed their newest online organization training. The village is now eligible for federal disaster relief funding, great job, Moni. On January seventeenth, Greater Will County Emergency Services Mutual Aid Association approved the Moni EMA team to full membership status, which will provide additional emergency support resources to the village of Moni. The Moni Police Department has donated ten radios to EMA, providing significant cost savings to the team. And for all village, uh, officials, first aid recertification class will be held on Saturday, March twelfth. There's two classes, one from eight AM to ten AM, and the other one is from eleven AM to one PM. Um, our certificate, our certifications, um, expire next month, and those trustees that plan to attend, please RSVP with Michelle or Ruben.
So is that required?
No.
Or is that, uh-
I remember two years ago, we all took those CPR classes, it's just to get recertified.
Go in if you want to.
If you don't do it, then you just, you're not certified.
If, if I, if I fall over and, and lose consciousness, and you don't feel like resuscitating me, then you're, you're standing regardless.
Um, that's the end of the email report, and for police, I'd like to turn the attention to the police chief, he has something to say.
We've recently, uh, noticed an uptick in scam activity, and, uh, I gave, uh, each of you a sign and out that has a rough idea about how some of the, so, we'll call, like, when Oscar's been arrested, a person will call up, represent themselves as an attorney, and they'll say to you that, uh, your grandson's been arrested. And generally, the responses are either one of two things, and most people are even going to point out the name of the person, and the person on the other end of the phone's going to go, you up that soon? Or they're going to say, um, you're going to ask which one, and they're going to say, in this case, we'll call him Oscar. And that's because you just got done posting on Facebook a nice family vacation photo, and you tagged Oscar, and we know who he is. It's very difficult not to do that in this day and age. That person will then ask you for a cash bond to be posted for Oscar. Usually those responses come in three ways, it's, oh my goodness, what did he do? And usually the person on the other end of the phone's going to go, that's not really important now, what's important is, is we need to get the bond posted. So I need a check number from you and a routing number so that we can get that taken care of as quickly as possible. If the response from that person, uh, rather than the, oh my goodness, is, well, well, how much money does he need? The, the amount of money generally goes up then. The first, oh my goodness, might be a thousand dollars, and the second one might be two thousand dollars, because they already know you're willing to pay. Okay? And they're going to ask for the same thing, a check number and a routing number for your bank in order to get that done. And then, the other thing that usually happens or can occur in those conversations is the person calling you will hear, I don't have that kind of money on hand. Well, then, the other alternative is always, well, just give us a credit card number and give me the three digits off the back so that we can get this done as quickly as possible. Either way, they're going to insist that they need this information from you in order to secure the release of your grandson or other loved one, it could be anybody, I'm just using it as an example. You know, generally speaking, because you love your family members, you want to do that, you want to take care of them. And what you find out is, is the next day when you go to the bank, there's nothing in your bank. They've emptied out your checking account, or they maxed out your credit card. And worse than that is, you're always going to call your grandson or your loved one ahead of time to find out why exactly it is they did something that stupid. And that's when most people find out, I've never been there, I don't even know what you're talking about, and I would never even call you for bond money. So, the, the moral of the story here is, is if you're going to give somebody money, then it better be somebody that you trust absolutely implicitly with. And that information that you put out on the internet, especially personal information, is gleanable by the people that want to scam you, and they will use it to scam you. And lastly, uh, in, in this particular instance, don't be embarrassed to call us, because people do this all the time. They get scammed, they don't tell us, we can't help them if you don't call us, and we won't know that these scams are going. And then, also, you have to notify your financial institution the minute you've been scammed, and try and be able to recoup your money. If you don't, the money's gone forever. If you assume that it's gone forever, it's gone forever. And, uh, the, the other scam that's come up just, uh, recently again, and it's that time of year, uh, is the IRS scam. And you'll get a call from somebody who'll say, I'm with the IRS, and you owe a great deal of money to the government. And, uh, if you don't pay by phone right now, FBI is going to come to your house, arrest you, and see if there's anything wrong. And people daily give their numbers out to those folks. That person that, that takes that phone call, just hang up. Don't even bother talking to them any further. If they call you back, you tell them right off the bat, my accountant's already handling this, I got your message, I understand. My accountant said I don't owe you anything. And if they become persistent, hang up again, this time down nine one one, and we'll show up. We'll give you the best advice that we can. But again, never give anybody financial authority over any of your income, in any way, shape, or form, unless you implicitly trust that person. And even if you do, that doesn't mean that it's always in your best interest. So, you know, it's, be wise about how you spend your money. And, and again, in that instance, don't be embarrassed if it happens. Call us, let us know what's going on, we can at least try to help you through it. And if nothing else, generating the reports is what's going to have the financial, that's going to help the financial institutions to refund your money if they can. Credit cards, not as hard as, uh, checking accounts, checking account's a whole other story, especially if you don't see it in the first six days. That's all I have on scams.
Geez, if you don't mind me, I was just throwing something in, my own family, my daughter-in-law called me up crying because, uh, the company was going to garnish wages on, uh, the, uh, working member of the family because they said he had taken out two loans within a four-month period, three years ago. Then we got a call, they actually called us also, they had our name, and said the same thing, well, I called a friend. And he said, forget about it, don't even respond. You know, you didn't do that, it's a scam, don't send them any money, said they're not going to garnish wages. And you're right, chief, we never heard from them again, so I took some, some advice.
They're out there, which I just noticed. Okay, Police Safety and Attorney Report, I think Mary, uh, since we got another visitor in the room, that we can go ahead and jump to K eight first?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
I think we're missing a trustee, so.
Thank you, Mayor. On K eight, there is a proposed third supplement to the redevelopment agreement with, uh, JTR. And Mr. Rope is here tonight for the board, any information the board may request from him. A brief summary, in October two thousand two, and Kevin's all on work on this, uh, we signed a developer's note with Mr. Rope in the amount one hundred and fifty-two thousand, six sixty-seven, uh, he owns JTR. Thirty thousand was due in two thousand thirteen, twenty thousand in two thousand seventeen, and agreed, uh, pay a portions, rebate pay, uh, sales tax from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two. Subsequent to that, I believe in January two thousand fifteen, we agreed to additional payment of fifty thousand, nine fifty-two. The village paid the sum of twenty-four thousand, three seventy-eight, leaving a balance, I believe, of twenty-six thousand, five seventy-four. Mr. Rope has submitted all, ain't all TIF expenses that he's incurred. Uh, the balance is forty-three, forty-six thousand, five seventy-four. What this supplement to the redevelopment agreement does is basically just clarify the first two, indicating, uh, we owe Mr. Rope forty-six thousand, five seventy-four. And that if full payment is delivered to JTR, he will waive the, uh, request of the rebate of the sales tax from two thousand twelve to two thou- I'm sorry, two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two. Uh, all the expenses seem to be in order, uh, he's been in business for roughly, what, two years, Mr.?
A year, yes, all around thirty years now.
Three years. Two years in, uh, Moni, again, this agreement, uh, I think he was the first gentleman to, uh, help us on the governor's highway, and the sum at this, uh, is, would be forty-six thousand, five seventy-four, coming from, uh, the- and the sum at this, uh, is would be forty-six thousand, five seventy-four coming from, uh, the Governor's Highway TIF.
And, um, I think the board may recall, uh, when, uh, Jeff from JTR came before the board previously, he had gone, as we have noticed, by the beautification that's taken place on Governor's and Court Street there, uh, above and beyond. Uh, really, uh, it, it, it's the kind of workmanship that we can all be proud of. Uh, and we realize that there's a lot more involved in it than he had even anticipated on the front end as the terms of the contract and the agreement and everything else. At this point, because of how much he had gone up above and beyond, he's endured a little bit of a hardship, is what's been explained to me. Uh, and he would be very grateful to, for this to rest so that he can go ahead and, uh, receive his final payments. And, uh, and again, my hat's off to Jeff, it's a beautiful facility.
Thank you, mayor.
Um, I guess at this point, Larry, we, we have an agreement that you had drafted uh, that summarizes the terms that, uh, Mr. Grcheski just identified. Uh, I don't know if, uh, this again was just finalized as of recently as today, I know the board hasn't had a chance to review that. I don't know if, Larry, how do you want to proceed with this?
The board, if the board deemed appropriate, has the authority to authorize the mayor to execute the same. And it can be made, Mr. Rope, you are, uh, aiding him in his development by advancing some of the funds, just critical, Mr. Rope, you stay current with the taxes, because that money's coming from, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so there is a commitment from the village, and, and in consideration thereof, Mr. Rope, again, then would waive the, uh, portion of sales tax from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-two, which would be ballpark on one hundred fifty-two thousand, probably about forty-five thousand dollars.
And then, I, I just want to verify, uh, and again, another internal process that's been implemented. I know Daryl's been hawkishly dealing with new policies for the, uh, finance and such, and, uh, we, we've got an internal policy that has been implemented that requires at least two members of staff to review, uh, the details of the, uh, the terms and conditions of this. And, uh, it's been a very exhaustive process, um, and we're learning too. So, uh, Kevin, I know that you were the one to champion that, that process, and Daryl, I know you've been, been part of reviewing that as well, so... I'm looking for a motion to, uh, simply approve the final payout to Mr. Rope as, as...
Forty-six, all again?
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand, five seventy-four?
I don't make that motion.
Hold on, just point a clarification. I'm, I'm looking at your draft form, Larry, and I'm just... In here, is it, I don't know if I'm not understanding, because my head's all clogged up. Is it forty-six, five seventy-four?
Forty-six.
Four twenty-six, five seventy-four?
The, the original twenty from the first part of the agreement, which was what he did to the most of the rehab of the building?
Was already done.
No, 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 he never received the fir, he, he never received the second payment. He should, but he hasn't received the second payment from the first agreement, which had to do with the initial rehab. Then he came back before the board for an additional fifty-six approximately pertaining to the, more of the exterior signage and the, and all that. So there's two separate agreements, what this is doing is consolidating them and a simplification. He's not getting any more money than he would have gotten before, it's just simplified it to a single...
He still owed twenty thousand on the first agreement.
And that's, and that would be settled as well.
Put the two together to end it.
So, and this would close, both the first and then the supplement are now consolidated to a simple payout.
If I may just clarify.
Yes, sir.
Uh, sector of the motion, go ahead and move discussion.
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, what, you're correct, Heidi. Basically, in two thousand twelve, we paid, in two thousand thirteen, we paid him thirty thousand out of the total of fifty, okay? Then in two thousand fifteen, he came back in for the sign. He asked us for fifty thousand, nine fifty-two. We paid him twenty-four thousand, three seventy-eight on that, so it's basically two obligations. We paid half of almost each obligation, and what Mr. Rope is asking today is to advance both those obligations and pay it in full. So once we pay him the forty-six thousand, the obligation in October two thousand twelve is satisfied in full, and the obligation in two thousand, uh, fifteen is satisfied in full.
So you get more than he even asked for, see?
No.
That's on this letter, that's all.
Well, yeah.
All right. Thank you, I'm good.
So we have, I believe, trustee Pop and trustee Olson. And any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Jeff, again, thank you, beautiful facility, and we're glad to have you.
And thanks for letting us use your site once in a while.
Anytime you guys want.
Hey, you know what the other problem is? I better not see a Packers thing on that.
Uh, I, I can't do it, Jay, I won't do it. DJ and I talk about it once in a while.
Thank you, mayor. The, the next item, just an update on the property acquisitions. Uh, we closed on the parcel on Industrial Drive, uh, last week. Uh, sort of a long transaction, but the deal has closed. Uh, the possession will be given to the village April first. During the interim, the tenant is paying us rent. Uh, from what I understand, the property's in pretty good shape. Um, and we did get a little more in a tax credit, so, uh, the village saved roughly about ten thousand dollars off that price. Uh, but that property is ours, or the village's, I should say. Uh, the other property that we're looking to buy on, uh, uh...
Egyptian.
I'm sorry, yeah, Egyptian Trail, there was an issue on the, uh, how the previous owner basically subdivided the property. We are going to proceed with the transaction, but, uh, one side of that property's in, uh, foreclosure. The other side that we're buying, uh, there is an issue with the way the previous owner put that garage. So the buyer can only, sorry, that seller can only give us a quick claim date to that property. It just complicates the title. Uh, we are going to close, we are taking, uh, we're going to disuse it for retention, uh, but it's a little more complicated than what everyone initially believed, I believe, from our standpoint. Uh, but the garage, if you've noticed, it's on both parcels. So the seller cannot give us what we call a warranty date, they can only give us a quick claim date. A quick claim date basically saying, "Here's your property, and no guarantees to it." So, if you can't build on that property, what we're going to do is, you know, for retention. So we should close that. There were six errors, uh, they all signed off. I think we'll close, we're hoping by, uh, early next week.
And it comes in very handy, as, as you'll recall, as it relates to the roundabout and everything else in there, so... Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. And, uh...
And just go back to the first property, if I could, though. Trustee Pop, I believe you actually had the opportunity to, to do a walkthrough inspection on that property?
Yes.
On Industrial?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the building that we're getting rent on now.
Well, yeah. Great.
I understand there's a lot of material that's got, uh...
That's a nice way to describe it, Larry.
It's loaded, I don't know what you're going to do with it.
The, uh, last item for the board's review and consideration is a proposed redevelopment agreement with Gina Sports, which is, uh, the Indian Motorcycle Dealership. The, the board calls, Mr. Revellitis came into the village, I would say, uh, November twelfth of, uh, not sure what year, two thousand, uh, two thousand fourteen. Uh, he asked the board for some TIF help in that area to renovate the building. Uh, I think they indicated we would agree not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars if they're TIF-eligible expenses. Uh, he submitted expenses to the village, and I know Kevin's taking a look at them, uh, quite extensively along with myself and, uh, the mayor and, and Mr. Batista. It appears as though his expenses are limited, uh, partly because the land's already in his name, the second trailer's down a lot of infrastructure, um, you're bringing his expense on a TIF project, his land acquisition, he owned the land. So, and I think he's, uh, aware of that now through his, him and his council. It appears as though his cost right now would be, TIF-eligible cost would be about thirty-seven-five, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. He's going to look for further expenses to see if they qualify, but as of today's date, it's roughly thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, which probably caught him a little by surprise, but he understands our, our constraints, because you cannot give him money or any developer that does not TIF-qualify. What this agreement indicates is that, uh, uh, we would pay him the thirty-seven-five. He's got certain obligations to us, like payment of taxes each and every year, make sure the sales tax is paid. He's complied with all the regulations from a billing standpoint. He's still got to, uh, comply with any other notes or obligations that are due the village. Uh, I think he is, uh, requesting that we take a look at this agreement. Uh, it's a basic agreement with what we've done before in the past. Um, there's no, there's plenty of money in the Governor's Highway TIF. And we're asking him in this agreement also that, to look at possibly developing the previous Mitsubishi dealership on Governor's Highway, that's, uh, what's going to happen if we, if it's not developed. They might go in for a vacancy on the property and reduce the tax base, so that, that will help our TIF either. And he's understanding, and if he can come up with a potential dealership on that site, I think, uh, put a provision in there that we can give him probably additional more money on the, uh, Indian Motorcycle Dealership if you can find more expenses. That's incumbent upon him, not upon us. Um, that's for the board's review and consideration. I will let the board know, uh, Mr. Trickle, his counsel has obtained a copy of this. Uh, I could send it to him tomorrow for his review, but at least in this point in time, we can indicate, you know, the board has taken a look at it from a concept standpoint. You know, we could say it's favorable or not favorable, but at least it shows from our faith standpoint that we are trying to expedite this as soon as we possibly can.
Larry, if I, if I may interject a couple of things here, and, um, there was a, the history on this is, uh, Mr. Revell, um, had, had been desirous, I had actually met with the, the, with Mr. Revell and the folks from, actually, they're being players, because that's some other company, the Indian Victory, uh, and trying to encourage them to consider the validity of them moving or allowing him to have a franchise there. And we were thrilled when it came to fruition, uh, as far as the, the ability for that. He was looking for that support. It, uh, just to, to be specific, um, on November twelfth of two thousand fourteen, we had a board meeting. Subsequent to that, after we get a verbal consent of the board, um, this is exactly what I had sent to Mr. Revell for his awareness. And it is, I obtained tentative approval for a pre-develop, a pre-development agreement with you for the Indian Victory Build-Up. Fifty percent of property tax increment according to TIF-eligible expenses and guidelines specified in that agreement in advance, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. We're learning how to better help and come alongside. We haven't always had a economic development director, we haven't always, you know, had the wherewithal to actually help people like Mr. Root and different things like that. Uh, we would have, we would have assumed that Mr. Revell's attorney would have been, uh, the one who would help them, or Mr. Roots, or whatever else, and we find that sometimes we've got a lot of great business people in our area that don't necessarily know the nuances of things that we have to legally abide by. And so we have to do a better job in the future, and we're working on that, of, of helping them with this. Um, we didn't actually get the request, if you will, for the, uh, partnership on the specifics. I believe it was until actually after the occupancy had been granted. Again, much like JTR, uh, the, the, the facelift that we see there with the Indian Dealership is beautiful. Uh, it adds, again, more charm and curb appeal to our whole community. I mean, Governor's Highway in itself still needs a lot of work. Uh, not the roof itself, but, you know, the, 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 the presence, if you will. Mr. Revell was of the expectation, because of not being clear on how this world worked out, that he was hoping to be able to receive much more than, or much closer to the four hundred thousand. Uh, we also identified a limitation with the assessor's office. Kevin went personally over and met with the potential assessor and identified that in spite of the beautification, um, it, it, we, we found ourselves in a little bit of an economic upside-down issue, whereas the building was still worth more. Uh, or, he paid more originally for the building when the economy was better than the increased value, perceived value or otherwise, actually added to the property. So the amount of this increment was rather limited. Uh, and the protection for that increment wouldn't have been a whole lot, even over the next ten years, say, of the, of that, of that area. Sympathetic to our business that, you know, we, we want to see flourish in this area, it was suggested that we actually just make a lump sum predetermination based on those items that are... I gotta give Kevin credit, he spent hours reviewing and trying to find every possible aspect of this that meets all my code, uh, as far as for TIF-eligible expenses. Uh, normally, that would be something the developer would present to us, and it would already have been verified, and we'd just have to, you know, "Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine." Um, and this is a process for us to better know how to help people in the future, and we intend to do more of that. The point is, uh, with what Larry said, he's got an agreement, he's, uh, there's terms and conditions to it. But, uh, the goal would be to provide him the thirty-seven-five, I believe it was, that Kevin identified was, uh, proof that he had already validated as being TIF-eligible. Um, it's not a lot when considering that Mr. Revell's hoping for a little more, a little closer to four hundred, or even half of that, or whatever. Uh, and it's not going to come close to that, unfortunately. So, the suggestion was, and I believe what, what way Larry may have worded the agreement would be, that he'd get the thirty-seven-five with the board's approval, and the contingency would be if he can find additional TIF-eligible expenses that would be authorized for more payment, and he brokers the deal for repurposing the building across the street for another dealership, then that would be an, an additional incentive for us to revisit the, that kind of additional payment. For what, what was the terms in there, or, another thirty-seven?
Can I read it?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. What I had, additional consideration, uh, this is last night. "In the event that developer provides additional eligible TIF expenses as defined in Illinois Tax Incremental Allocation Redevelopment Act other than the items listed in paragraph exhibit C, which are the original expenses, the village shall agree to reimburse the developer for said expenses not to exceed the sum of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in the form of an obligation acceptable to both parties." Meaning, it doesn't have to be cash, it could be a possible note. "Said expenses shall be submitted to the village within sixty days of signing of this agreement." Again, it's incumbent upon him to provide those expenses to Kevin, not to us. Uh, "This obligation is subject to developer developing the vacated premises, commonly known as two-five-nine-six-three South Governor's Highway, uh, with the use acceptable to the village." So if he gets a potential user that would generate a lot of sales tax, you know, the board still has the, the right then to say, "We like that idea." And that gives him a little more incentive, and again, if he can come up with more expenses other than what he provided to us, the board has the right to expend that money to him, uh, given, if, you know, Kevin finds him to be, uh, TIF-eligible.
And, and just so everybody knows, his out-of-pocket for this project was three sixty-three?
I believe he was requesting three hundred and fourteen thousand.
Okay. So he had a significant investment in this, of which he's barely getting ten percent of it right now, based on what we've identified as being TIF-eligible. There's a lot of costs that went into that because it was mandated to, to, I think part of it had to do with the criteria that was implemented by corporate franchise expectations, but doesn't necessarily, those aren't necessarily always TIF-eligible, which is unfortunate, but, you know, it's the specifications that are imposed on that, so sadly, this is about the best we can do for him. So, I, just a presentation there, just any questions for Kevin or Larry or whoever else regarding this?
Well, and just, I guess, just a comment or just for the conversation too. And I read this pretty detailed, and I had a chance to talk to Larry about it today, and I just want to be sure, um, that Mr. Revellitis is happy with it too, because very clearly, he's worked with us a lot too, and he clearly has a vested interest and continues to have a vested interest in Moni. Um, so thankfully... So thankfully, whatever we need to do to spur this, and as our commercial says, that we have an aggressive economic development, I think this will, his light years would be able to show, show that we are willing to do.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Um, I did kind of, all right, sorry, I did call Mr. Trico, his attorney today. He hasn't seen this yet. I want the board to take a look at it first before I send it to him. I did indicate to him last week, uh, the, the expenses are roughly thirty-seven thousand, thirty-eight thousand. And I think he sort of expected that once we had the conversations with him prior to that, saying, you know, the TIF act is, our hands are tied. So, uh, you know, I think it's a good gesture to say if you could bring in another development across the street and you find additional TIF expenses, the board's wanting to go up to another thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
And that doesn't limit us from having a separate agreement for across the street.
Absolutely. You can have a separate agreement, like the mayor indicated, for the, uh...
For any new development.
If, again, he's got to go through the TIF expenses, submit them to Kevin. If they're eligible, it's up to the, you know, the board to say this or not. So he's got two bites of the apple. He can get just redevelopment agreement. And then if he could, God willing, bring in a, uh, another development across the street, generate sales tax for us, we can give him a TIF agreement for that.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, if we can, if you're ready for that. I didn't, and, and there again, I don't, unless there's anything... Larry, you said if there's any, on the substance of this, is it?
I think it's.
Fine as is?
Yes. You know, and again, I, I caution that, but Mr. Trico has his ear. He might come back and say, Larry, I don't like this wording or whatever. But at least in good faith, we're saying, Mr. Trico, the ball's in your ballpark.
Okay.
If you want something different, let us know, go back to the board.
So we're looking for approval based on the current written thing. If there's an adjustment to that, you'll just have to come back.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure the, uh, that wording about the additional thirty-seven-five is acceptable because I'm not sure it's in your version or not. I worked on it last night. Again, if he can submit those bills and he's aware of what the TIF act is now, and he can bring in a dealership across the street, you're committed to another thirty-seven-five. Not to exceed thirty-seven-five, I should say.
Which is still a fragment of what he actually made.
Yeah, I think he was expecting, like Kevin said, probably three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When he saw not to exceed four hundred, I think, I don't want to put words in his mouth because he's, you know, extremely, uh, good businessman, but I, I think he was under the impression that he would get not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
But we're, as you can, we're, we're, I don't mind, we're not by state laws. So we're looking for a possible motion on approving this as Larry presented.
Can you give me, just, what is the motion to approve?
The motion to approve redevelopment.
Motion to approve, not that's what I said.
Well, this is in ordinance, so we don't actually need to approve in the ordinance then, or just?
I'm sorry, approve the ordinance, authorize, and the mayor to execute the redevelopment agreement by between the village and, uh, I think Gina's Motorsports.
I'll make that motion.
Second. So is Gonzalez and Razik?
Discussion?
Yes, please.
For the record, was there any suggestion of misrepresentation on the part of the village relative to the four hundred thousand dollars?
No, uh, from, maybe Mr. Revell?
Right.
No, I believe not a misrepresentation. We did indicate there was a text going to him showing four hundred, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. I would say, Mr. Revell.
We're going to account this for, if you want to see exactly what's involved.
Just ask the question.
I think maybe some confusion, but not misrepresentation. There was no accusation from either side.
Mr. Revell has a promissory note on behalf of his business that moved out of Moni.
Yes.
For the village for how much? What's the balance on that?
I, Daryl, do you know the curb balance?
Roughly?
Initial, initial balance is about three seventy-five. These currently is, is stated as such.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Initially. So he's made how many payments on that? About what, a year?
About a year. But he's, he's curbing with his payments.
It was five thousand dollars or more, isn't it?
Seven fifty-one.
It's close.
Okay.
I'm an accountant.
Oh, that one's a big one.
That's all, thank you.
So we have a motion in the second?
Record call, please. This is to approve.
To approve the, well, actually, it would be to approve a redevelopment agreement as identified by an ordinance, I believe that.
Yes, sir.
So once we're done, we'll get an ordinance number on that for Kevin. So we have a motion in the second, and this is a, for redevelopment agreement as it relates to...
Gina's Motorsports, Motorsports.
Yeah, I was looking for the address, but I don't have it.
Two-six-one-two-zero South Governor's Highway.
Or, it'll be more, two-six. Two-six-one.
Two-zero.
Two-zero.
Two-sixty-one-twenty-five.
Currently known as Indian Victory.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Gray?
Number first?
One vote doesn't get to the kitchen ordinance. Trustee Gray? Trustee Alston?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
President.
And Razik?
Where are you doing the other? Organ summer, please. All right, um, next on the agenda, old business. I don't have anything here. Does anybody have anything here in their old business? Open to the public, non-agenda items. Lord?
Lord?
Come on, say anything, that's all.
All right, we've already had executive exception. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Moore and Razik, the time's now nine seventeen on January eight, so. Nine seventeen, record call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Razik?
Yeah.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Alston?